I'd also like to acknowledge the school district for their support and for the use of this facility, the Northlake Community Center. Next, I'd like to make sure that everyone understands several points about the forum. First, the Lexington Chamber is a nonpartisan organization and does not endorse nor recommend candidates. Second, our purpose this evening is to help educate the voters about each candidate and their platforms so that the voters can select the best candidates as they prepare to vote on or before November the eighth. Now let's discuss our format. The moderator will ask all the questions. The questions were developed by the forum's co-host. Please allow me to briefly review the rules of the forum. Prior to the forum, each candidate was asked to select a number so that the candidate order would be random instead of seating by last name, for example. Our format will be a series of questions that will be asked to each candidate. We will rotate the order of responses so that everyone will have an opportunity to respond first to a question. For example, this means that Chris Rice will go first, then Aaron Grande, and so on until we run out of time or questions. Each candidate will be allowed to respond to every question. A ninety-second time limit on each answer will be strictly enforced. We have a timekeeper, Karen Johnston from the Lexington Chamber, to help the candidates keep track of time. She will give a thirty-second warning, a fifteen-second warning, and then will hold up a card that says stop when the ninety seconds are up. In order to get in more questions, we may switch to a thirty-second, excuse me, thirty or sixty-second response time towards the end of the forum and your moderator will provide instructions. Candidates will not be allowed to interrupt one another while answering the questions. No inappropriate language, name-calling, etc. will be allowed. No time is allotted for rebuttals. A candidate can make clarification A candidate can make clarifications or ask for the question to be repeated during the time allotted to them for answering the questions. Following the questioning segment, each candidate will be given one minute for a closing statement. At this time, I'd like to turn over the program to Jordan Lawrence, the managing editor of the Lexington Chronicle, to continue with the introductions of the candidates.
Can we hear it? Okay. Thank you, Angel. With us this evening are nine candidates that are running for three seats on the Lexington One Board. All candidates were invited to this forum. Two candidates, Mary Price and Katie McCown, were unable to attend. Here tonight, in the order they appear onstage, starting at the left, are Chris Rice, Aaron Grenade, Nicholas Pizzuti, Richard Galing, Dana Holmesley, Andrea Nazarenko, Reece Sage, Beth Shealy, and Haleyette Poe Coker. We will begin with the first question, which goes to you first, Mr. Rice. What is the biggest issue for you as you look to join the school board? How would you go about tackling it if elected, keeping in mind that you would be one voice among seven?
Can you repeat that one more time?
No problem. What is the biggest issue for you as you look to join the school board? How would you go about tackling it if elected? And keeping in mind in that, that you would be one voice among seven on the board.
I think the biggest issue to tackle would be coming... Oh, can't hear? Okay, the biggest issue is going to be operating the microphone. No, just kidding. I think the biggest issue would be coming into an existing board. I'm a person who has served on a lot of, a lot of community boards within the Lexington area, and because of that, I have a lot of knowledge in terms of what the community is like and the differences in the community. So I think the biggest challenge is going to be how, if elected, how to come onto a board that's already established with four members and be a third member, but come in with more of a learning posture rather than a knowing posture, trying to say, hey, we need to do it this way or do it that way. I think one of the other big issues is going to be, you know, making sure that we're holding the district accountable for helping our students increase in terms of their academic performance and so forth. If you saw the school board Tuesday night, there were some metrics that showed us that. And so my way of tackling it is coming in as a learner and not a knower, and just trying to research and learn what I can, and try and work together with the different points of view, but also bring the points of view of constituents to the table and make sure we're addressing those also.
Mr. Grenade.
All right. Hello, one, two, can you hear me? Okay. The biggest issue on our school board, in my opinion, is the acknowledgement of parents as the primary stakeholders in their students' education. The students are the primary consumers, teachers and administrators are the primary providers, but the parents are what the glue that holds it all together. The children belong to the parents, they don't belong to the school, we do not co-parent with the government. And so some of the biggest issues are going to be, and immediately are, how do we do this so that parents can be more involved in the process? How can we present our opinions and our values and our policies to create an environment that the parents can better help navigate their children and their learning? And so what do I bring to that? Well, I have a fire in me, I'm very passionate, I've never minced words on my opinions, I am staunchly conservative, but I am running as a voice for the parents that often feel like they are not represented in the school district. And when there are issues related to values and morality, the consensus first and primarily needs to be the parents because they know their children better than anyone else does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
First off, I'd like to thank you for having us here. There's a lot of familiar faces in the audience tonight from my years in the Rotary Club and then also other years in the Chamber of Commerce. But to me, a challenge that we face, I think is something that we should all look at, is to make sure that every child, and let me repeat that, every child reaches their full potential. Now, how do we do that? Well, first, as a board, we must learn to work together. We must learn to work through our differences to come to a common agreement, to make sure everyone reaches their full potential. I think we have to make sure that we have communication with all stakeholders, including the parents, the staff, the teachers, all the way down to, you know, the ones that are there every night cleaning the schools. I think we also must make sure that every staff member and every teacher has the resources they need. I think that's another challenge that is needed in this district. I think we all can agree that teachers are asked to wear more hats than they really can wear. They don't have the time to complete every task they need to the day, they need time to plan, they need time for mental breaks, just like we all do. And I've said this in a bunch of different things, that I hate seeing at the beginning of the year where teachers are asking for donations to get items they need for their classroom. They should never need to ask or anything, it should be given to them by the district, and that's another challenge that we must meet. So by saying all these things, we must work together, parent, teacher, staff, administrator and all, to make sure that every child reaches their full potential, and I think that's the main challenge that I would like to attack.
Thank you, Mr. Galing.
Thank you, once again, too, thank you for having us here tonight and all the rest. It's a very good question, and I really think, I'm sorry if I get back a little bit too loud. As far as that goes with the current board and everything else, there'll be three new members, depending where they come in, depending who the three members are and what comes in, I think there's going to have to be some give and take with the existing board and all the rest, and go into it, and determine, right now, it seems like a lot of infighting, there's a lot of, you know, even the board itself. It needs to be more working for the children, working for our kids in our district, not just for these people here. So I agree with all the, everything they've all said with, you know, this teacher, staff and all the rest, but I think still, there's a lot of issues here that we have to work to build a team out of the board. Right now, I think it's shattered, and there's certain things that they're going with, that they're focusing on, other people are bringing other agendas in from other fields because they saw other boards that are trying to influence the school board. I think those things have to, you know, have to quit. And at that point, that's all I have to say at this period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmesley.
I think one of the biggest issues coming into this board, and I've gone to many meetings, I've been to a total of thirty-six meetings so far since I have started going over a year and a half ago. The biggest issue, I would say, is the board unfortunately just does not operate as one. The lack of communication within the board, as well as the lack of communication with the community, is very real. There is a lot of mistrust that is going around. It has been eroding, and it has continued to erode even to this day. So my biggest thing that I want to, what I want to tackle is, even before running, building that line of communication, speaking with the community, speaking with the citizens and the taxpayers, hearing what they have to say, hearing the questions and being able to answer those questions, and if I can't answer those questions, then I know where to tell them to go in order to get those questions answered. So just basically making sure that we build back that communication, build back that trust within our board.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
I have a similar response as Dana, because when you look across our school district right now, and you look at the issues that are prioritized, from student achievement, including achievement with particular subpopulations, to teacher retention, to the support staff, and all of the staff that encompass the whole district, and then you look at community relations, and the relations with the town, with the county, as well as the parents and the taxpayers, there is one theme that runs through all of that, and that is a lack of trust. Our teachers are not trusting that the administrators have their back, our parents are not trusting that the teachers are teaching education that fits with their value system, our administrators are not trusting that our district is supporting us with the resources that we need equitably across all of the schools within our district, and our taxpayers are not feeling like there's trustful people out there who are holding their taxes and their money with safety. We need to build trust. And when you think about trust at a system level, it feels overwhelming at heart, but when you pull it back and realize what a school district really is, a school district is an aggregate of individual people, individual people who care about the children. And when we lead with our heart, and when we lead with our human connectedness, and we join together and say, I care about the children, and you care about the children, and you might have a different opinion than me, and we might have different views, but we all care about the children, and that's where we begin.
Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Well, my main concern is money, and the way it's being horribly mismanaged at the moment. And if the money was managed better, now this is my main concern, is managing the money better, better stewarding the taxpayers' taxes, because the taxpayer is paying the taxes for the school system so the students can learn, and the teachers can be provided, and equipment can be provided, but it's largely being wasted on grandiose projects. There have been a lot of new schools built that really weren't needed, and they've got a, the Pillion Middle School is currently just empty because they've built another school instead of just refurbishing that one, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with it, as far as I can see. Then they've got the new transportation depot, which they paid way over the odds for the land, and it wasn't really needed. They already have a transportation depot that they don't have to pay rent for. So my main aim is to get better value for money for the taxpayer and provide better services, and instead of these grandiose schemes, maybe raise some of the lowest wages. And the beginner bus driver, for example, earns seventeen dollars an hour. Now that's over a hundred and eighty days a year, that's eleven dollars an hour over a complete year.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. Ms. Shealy.
Yeah, the biggest issue for me is the need to focus on getting our kids back where they need to be academically. The last few years with COVID have been very difficult, they've been difficult on everybody, our teachers, our students, our society, our community, and we've got to not focus on fighting each other, but focus on our kids' education, because that's why we're here tonight, that's why our schools exist, that's why our district is here, because it's about our kids' education. So there were some really interesting slides that were shared at the district meeting this week, and I was super excited to see that because I'm a measurement girl, I love numbers, and to see the slides, they show that we've had a slump, our scores have gone down the past couple of years, our scores are kids' scores, they're our future. So we have got to focus on that. The exciting thing is that we've already seen some improvement. Over just this year, we've started to see some improvement, and our district has a plan, a forty-five-day plan, a ninety-day plan, and they are engaged to focus on our kids' education. So that is my primary focus, that is what I see as our primary opportunity. We've got to focus on our kids and their education. I agree with Chris, as new board members, we're going to come in and need to come in with a learning posture, but then at the end of the day, we have to work together. We can't be fighting about side issues, we've got to focus on our kids' education. That's why I'm excited to be running.
Thank you, Ms. Coker.
Yes, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure thing. What is the biggest issue for you as you look to join the school board? How would you go about tackling it if elected? And with that, keeping in mind that you would be one voice among seven on the board.
Thank you. I believe one of the biggest issues for myself and anyone that's running and joining the board is figuring out how we're going to work together, working, excuse me, with our different personalities. We need to be able to communicate with each other, as you said, we're one of seven on the board. We all are not going to agree all the same time, but we need to be able to communicate respectfully and professionally, and keeping our focus on the kids. There are a lot of things that divides this district in terms of growth, you know, test scores is the biggest thing, and it's so very difficult, the learning deficiencies to COVID is one of the main reasons I'm running, I need to bring that up. But we all bring something different to the table, we're going to have to work together using our individual strengths and communicate effectively, and in doing that, making sure that our focus stays on our children. They are our first and most important priority, and we're all going to have to be critical thinkers and team players, and make sure that we listen to parents and listen to other stakeholders, and plain and simple, do what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto question number two, which starts with Mr. Grenade. As a board member, you would have to interface with a variety of stakeholders, administrators, faculty, staff, parents, students. How would you go about getting up to speed on their concerns, and how would you handle balancing the concerns of these divergent groups?
I am communicating with parents, with teachers, there have been students that have reached out to me, not so many administrators, but that's a much shallower pool, but I would be happy to, actually, there have been some at the district level and at the school level, but to engage with them in conversation about not just the problems that we see, but also celebrating the victories that we see. I've had a number of great conversations with a lot of teachers, namely special education teachers and immersion teachers, who sometimes don't get the same respect and dignity as other types of teachers, and the, you know, but I do have a feeling that when the parents are put into the position as the primary stakeholders in this, it is their tax dollars, it is their children, that the other things will line up into place. A parent who is engaged actively, as I've tried to be, will have the respect of the teachers that his children are in, in the classes that his children are in, and you're, it kind of flows downhill from there. But, you know, there are times where combativeness is appropriate, and there are times when presenting other points of view are appropriate, and as others have said, no, we're not always going to agree, and many times in our current culture and climate, agreement would be the same as rubber stamping and keeping things exactly where they are, which in many cases is broken.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
Could you repeat that question?
I sure can. As a board member, you would have to interface with a variety of stakeholders, administrators, faculty, staff, parents, students. How would you go about getting up to speed on their concerns, and how would you handle balancing the concerns of these divergent groups?
I would say, keep on doing what I do now, let's keep an open ear. I've told anybody, my door is always open to talk to anyone, stay active in your community, get involved with PTOs, get involved in booster clubs, through that way you can discuss other issues with not just people that you're around, but that you know personally, but other people that you meet through this process. We all know we're not going to agree on everything, and I think that's perfectly fine. I think when you sit there and talk through your differences, that's when some of the best ideas are made of, when differences can be discussed out in a true manner, where you're not arguing, but you're each being respectful and giving your point, that's the best thing that needs to be done. And then, like, people talk about parents, yes, I believe parents should be the number one stakeholder, but I believe all parents should be the number one stakeholders, not just the ones that think that I do. I know what's best for my child may not be the best for someone else's child, so we have to always be mindful of that when we talk about the parents. I think we've got to make sure we talk to the staff, what their needs are, where they feel that they lack support, what do they need in their instance. I think we also got to be able to talk to the stakeholders when it comes to not just educational values, but what we're doing with the taxpayers' money when it comes to infrastructure, and where things are getting built, and how we're doing that, and what is being done with different locations. I think you've got to be well-rounded in your communication to everyone, not just on one certain topic, but you've got to be able to listen to everyone that deals with everybody's issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galing. I can. As a board member, you would have to interface with a variety of stakeholders, administrators, faculty, staff, parents, students. How would you go about getting up to speed on their concerns, and how would you handle balancing the concerns of these different groups?
My past life, I dealt with big groups. We had to deal with building a consensus, building things like this, and this is very big groups I'm talking about. Normally, my field is listen to everybody, talk to everybody, and determine what has to be done. Most of the time, in most of my programs I had to work on, and I think that's what needs to be done here, people have to sit down, as like these other gentlemen have already mentioned, and get a consensus, meet with the parents, meet with the community. It's just not a matter of it's a one size, fits all for everything. Right now, I see within the board and the community, it's almost like, and with the parents, there's almost a fight going on to do anything. They're actually fighting and trying to actually, you know, go after each other. There should be a consensus, these are our children, we should be doing these things and staying with these, you know, working with these parents, the community, the teachers. You know, the teachers feel, I talk to quite a few, because we have a lot, I have a lot of customers, I'm a business owner here, and you hear the teachers talking about how they can't, you know, they can't do this because they'll come down if they say this, or this one does this because it's with a student, the parent gets mad at this. There has to be some kind of consensus for these people, and I think the only way to do that is have a sit-down with all these people, and let's get it straightened out. It's not a fight, we're trying to educate the students and try to go from there on this, and for the best for the children, not best for the school.
Thank you, Ms. Holmesley.
I would say, like some of these other gentlemen said, that I would just keep doing what I'm doing.
I've been going at this for over a year, a year and a half, going to meetings consecutively, getting myself educated on policy processes and procedures and board governance. So I know what it takes to be a board member. I feel like I have a certain set of skills that are tailored to the work of a board member. I've tried to keep the community informed. I'm a co-creator of the Informed Citizens of Lexington County School District One. I've tried to inform the citizens that way. I've also gotten involved and spoke with county officials, speaking with them about my concerns with other community members' concerns, as well as teachers and parents. I've tried to build a communication way with everyone. And so I feel as though, as long as we are hearing what their concerns are, what their needs are, that we can do what is in the best interest of the students, teachers, and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
Yes, I, as a community psychologist, this is actually my, one of my areas of expertise, consensus building. And I have a whole lot of experience. I'm published in the scientific literature and various academic journals on processes I've used to join groups together. Because one of the major ways that implementation of any innovation, whether it be a policy program or procedure, gets halted is because of people being able to work together. And so there's a lot of technical response that I could give, but instead I'm going to pull it back and just highlight two pieces. The first is the mere recognition that everybody has a different perspective because they have a different role. So the different perspective, the opinion of the parent is going to be different from the opinion of the student. It's going to be, sometimes, it's going to be different than the teacher and the administrator and the board and the support staff. Everyone's going to play a different role, have a different opinion because they play a different role. And every single role is a valid part of our system. And so the goal is to try to find the thread that goes through that. One example of work that I did locally is in a local school district, not ours, but when they brought technology integration in. And I was a consultant to help implement this technology integration. The middle schools were so halted by their ability to work together that they had to delay their implementation. What I did was I came in with a set of tools, hosted workshops, laid things out in a logical way such that people began working together and the enthusiasm went through the roof for this effort.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Okay, well, to get up to speed, well, my, my door will always be open. My email box will always be open. I'll always answer voicemails and phone calls. And if parents want, parents or administrators or students have, or, well, anybody has questions, I'm quite happy to talk to them. As for resolving differences on the, between the groups, well, it's all about, well, largely about negotiation. And very often, the differences are not true differences, but misunderstandings of the solutions. I can't give you an example right now, but, because it's a question I hadn't had time to prepare for. But yeah, it's, it's all about communication. Most of the problems are just down to communication. We just all need to communicate better. I think that's the, that's all I've got on that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. Ms. Shealy?
I think something important to notice, there is a difference between hearing and listening. And that is a skill that has to be developed and used as, as a board member, as an effective board member. In my job, I negotiate contracts for a living. Super exciting for me, not so much for some. But I negotiate contracts for a hospital system with insurance companies. And on the outset, for somebody looking on the outside, they may see that as, gosh, that's a contentious job. But truly, we have the same goal. Our goal is to set up an agreement to cover their members and our patients, the same people. And so I think that's what we've got to keep in mind when we're talking to teachers and parents and administrators. We all have the same goal. I like the idea that we're coming from different perspectives. And yes, that's a good, that's a benefit for us. And we have to bring those perspectives together to figure out how to do the best for our students. I agree also that negotiation skills are a part of that. You've got to figure out how to negotiate with people. And sometimes, an important part of that is asking the right questions. Sometimes the person who is sharing information with you, they're not, they haven't figured out how to get their message across. And so they're not quite sure what to say. And sometimes, just being able to ask questions, to probe and to truly understand what somebody's concern is, sometimes that's something you've got to be able to use as a skill to get to the root of the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coker.
Again, agree. Communication, one of that, but true, to be able to effectively communicate, you have to listen. You cannot provide a recommendation or response if you truly don't understand what's being asked. And it is true that our focus is the children, but our concerns do look different for parents, the teachers, and administration. We all want what's best for our kids, but I have two boys. My concerns for them are vastly different. One, their personalities are different. Two, their ages are different. One just turned eleven actually today, and one is fourteen. One is on a five oh four, one is not. So even in my household, those concerns are very different. So it also looks very different for our teachers. I know that I'm a substitute teacher. I actually subbed today. I have between two classes, a total of almost forty children. My concerns for them throughout the day are different. But to be able to address their concerns, I have to listen. And just like what Beth said, they may not understand how to ask the question, and so we do have to prompt them. But one of the best things is knowing that they're all trying to do what's best. The children are asking, what can they do to help get the right answer for, we were working in ELA today, what they're supposed to write on their essay. So asking those questions and listening and helping them guide through. And we need to provide a way for our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, and our staff to be able to do that effectively so we can help them.
Thank you. We come back around to Mr. Rice.
Mind repeating the question again?
I would not.
Okay.
As a board member, you would have to interface with a variety of stakeholders, administrators, faculty, staff, parents, students. How would you go about getting up to speed on their concerns? And how would you handle balancing the concerns of these divergent groups?
Okay, well, one of the things with my platform for a school board is I have a concept called service constituents. And the main thing I've said about servicing constituents is that you listen with an open ear and then you respond appropriately. Some people hear that and they think that means you listen with an open ear and you respond appropriately if you agree with the person. And that is not the case. As a school board member, you represent everyone. And so my plan for basically overcoming that and tackling that issue would be, one concept I've talked about since I ran for school board in 2018 and 2020, is let's start having some town halls in Pillion, in Gilbert, in the White Noe area, so we can get direct input from the people who are affected in those areas and find out where they are. The other thing I would do as a school board member is not only town halls, but go-to school events, both academic and athletic. A lot of times, more things are organic. They happen all of a sudden at once when you're there with them. And then the other thing I've tried to do even on the campaign trail is when people reach out to me, email me, I tell them, I say, listen, I don't know if you're going to vote for me or not, but if you vote for me and I'm elected, I'm going to ask you to continue to keep the lines of communication open and hold me accountable. Say, hey, Chris, I didn't really like that. And find, you know, and let's talk about it. That's how you stay up to date on what's happening. Don't go on old information. You need current information. You've got to keep the lines of communication open to do so.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, starting with Mr. Pizzuti. Issues of communicating with the public and lacking transparency have been frequent topics of conversation during this campaign. What, if any, specific issues do you feel the district has in this regard? And what specific fixes do you have in mind for them?
I think one of the main problems we have is we don't give the public enough time to speak up. I think we give them, you know, three minutes each, fifteen minutes beforehand, and then there's no discussion back or anything else. I think we need to, do have more actual, where you have open forums for each, each person's concerns and work through that and actually have board members talk back to these people, not just listen to them and just nod their head. We need to have true communication. I think we need to also open up communication between our staff members and our, and our, and our teachers. Teachers are scared to voice concerns because they're worried about repercussions of what may come down to them. We need to give them a spot where they can actually speak to board members and not go back to someone where they feel like they're going to get in trouble or, you know, be lashed out by an administrator because they don't agree with what they're learning or what they're trying to teach. So I think it's always should be the open communication is what we need. More public involvement is the issue. I mean, we're a board elected by the taxpayers, by the people. If we can't have enough courtesy to give them the respect to listen to them and actually respond to them, then what are we really doing in the first place? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galing. Yeah, no problem. Issues of communicating with the public and lacking transparency have been frequent topics of conversation during this campaign. What, if any, specific issues do you feel the district has in this regard? And what specific fixes do you have in mind?
I think there has to be, we've talked about this, some other gentleman here, I've talked about it too. There has to be some community involvement and maybe it's, maybe it's some open forums and things with the groups, as was mentioned down there, some other things. It's just right now, it seems it's a very guarded thing, like Nick, like Nick had said. There is this little time slot, that's all the people get to talk. And there's not really that much talk in it. There's not a good communications between the current board members. I feel they don't open up, only a few of them actually do. Can you even call them? My idea is you have to have, give them your phone number, give the parents your phone number, give everybody your phone number, email, write me, let's talk about it. Go from there. It has to be opened up and more, more communications between all the, all parties involved. The way it's going right now, it's just not, you know, there needs, you know, there's oversight, there needs to be, you know, oversight is kind of lacking in a lot of things on this thing. So we really need to look into these things like that. And trust, we have to build the trust between the parents. Again, I feel it's totally lost between the board. There's, you know, the board, the parents think they're not getting heard, the board feels this, and I, and I say this because I know some of the board members, I hate to say that, but they feel they're just beaten, they're getting beat up on top of that. But if they would listen, there would not be this beat up on the top of the board, I feel, as much as it is currently right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmesley.
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Issues of communicating with the public and lacking transparency have been frequent topics of conversation during this campaign. What, if any, specific issues do you feel the district has in this regard? And what specific fixes do you have in mind?
Yes, there's an extreme lack of communication and transparency, specifically with fiscal transparency and responsibility. One of the biggest issues that I've had in regards to sending in FOIA requests, which are information requests with the district, is that they bring along hefty fees that come along with that. And a lot of citizens can't afford those hefty fees for information. The district, as well as the school board, it is a struggle to communicate and get information from them. In regards to the fiscal transparency and responsibility, I personally think that in regards to our budget, I've been pushing for a more comprehensive audit like they have in Lexington, Richland District Five. I think if we have an audit that is not just little, small little snippets within our budget that they focus on, especially since we've had the same auditors that has been used in other districts that are currently under investigation, maybe they would, they would build a little bit more trust with the community in regards to their tax dollars and where their money is being spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
Yeah, I agree with all of the candidates who spoke before me and rooted in this issue of communication. Transparency, though, is more than the delivery of information or the provision of information. Transparency is about how we act on a day-to-day basis and how we explain what we're doing. Right now, one of the big questions I have consistently across the board is why? Why did we make that decision? What are the motives behind that? Why did you vote this way? Why did you vote that way? Who are you representing? Which subpopulation are you representing? There's a lot of unanswered questions because there's a tendency, which is a general tendency in society, to look good. We live in an evaluative culture and we want to look good. But the community and the taxpayers don't want the fancy shiny sparkles. We want the truth. And the way we get to the truth is being honest with ourselves. And honesty involves stating what we do well, highlighting and celebrating what we do beautifully and well, and acknowledging the things that are not going well and being truthful about them and being truthful about our role in the things that don't go well. We are all humans. We are humans acting on a board. Teachers are humans. We learn. That's what we're teaching our kids, to be human and to learn. And we need to do that through transparency and action and following through with what we say we're going to do and our motives behind why we're doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Well, as everybody has acknowledged, there's a major problem on the board with transparency. And then it needs, the board needs to be a lot more transparent with everything. And the whole issue of transparency needs to go through the whole district. The whole district needs to be much more transparent about everything, from the financial decisions to the, the schools that students are put in and why they're put in those schools, because sometimes the parents don't know. And the child could, they could go to one school and they suddenly get sent to another school. And I had an example a couple of years ago. I used to take a child to Carolina Springs Elementary, and suddenly they were going to Meadow Glen Elementary. And it turned out through the grapevine that the teacher from, from the one school had quit. And the only, the only other teacher providing the service, same service, was in the other school. And that just wasn't clearly explained to the parents. So we need a lot more transparency in all levels of communication, not just on the board. And a lot more transparency with particularly the financial aspects on the board. We need to know that the money is being spent wisely. And, you know, I can't say most of it is at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy.
So finances is an area of expertise and interest for me. I work for a hospital system who manages about five billion dollars worth of revenue, gross revenue, a year. So I do enjoy working with numbers. I do feel like the community as a whole wants to understand the numbers for our board and for our district more. Now, I don't necessarily believe that that means posting every single fact, figure, information out there because, A, nobody's going to be able to understand it, and there's a reason why you hire a CFO and financial people to manage the finances. It's complicated business. And the, the average person on the street's not going to be able to understand it. However, one thing we can do as a board and as a, as a district is try to make that information understandable to the community. Because I truly think the community just wants to understand, just to feel a comfort level that, that finances are being spent efficiently and effectively. And there are ways to do that. There are processes to do that. And some of it's just talking at board meetings more, potentially, about our finances. I was excited to see our CFO speak this past week with the promise of more information to come. I think that's what we want as, as a community. The other thing is I believe that our community just wants to feel like they're being heard. If they have some concerns or some issues, they want to have formats that they can share the information and then feel like that that information is taken seriously, whether it's acted upon or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Yes. I think one thing to help alleviate some of this is educating the public on the roles and the responsibility of the school board and its members. And making sure that they understand what we can do and how we can help them. Again, just with effective communication is making sure you understand what's being asked and what's being asked of you. And just like Beth said, a lot of our community members just want to make sure they're being heard. I think we need to have better methods to do that, to make sure that we can hear their concerns. A lot of times, people in general, when we're asked questions about why we did something or our motivation for it, our first thought is to feel attacked. And I feel like there's a lot of that going on, and we need to stop that. We need to stop that mindset that when somebody asks us a question, they automatically think we've done something incorrect. And so again, that goes along with the effective communication is listening, to listen to what they're being asked of and to make sure that we can do that, you know, respectfully and professionally and positively. And I think if we can get a lot of those things under control, a little better understanding in the district and a better understanding of ourselves and how we respond as a board can help alleviate some of those problems with perception in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Rice? All good. Issues of communicating with the public and lacking transparency have been frequent topics of conversation during this campaign. What, if any, specific issues do you feel the district has in this regard? And what specific fixes do you have in mind? And what specific fixes do you have in mind?
Okay, specific issues. A lot of people have said it already, but I've even talked about it before. Accountability and transparency are two things that you're going to hear come from many, many candidates. The thing I see a lot of times is, we like to use the buzzword of accountability and transparency, but we don't have a plan. So, I'm glad you asked a question about specific fixes. So, I'll touch on two things. One, I think citizens' participation is a point of contention because people don't feel like they're being heard. One of my specific fixes would be, let's take the information we get from citizens' participation and let's have the board draft some kind of a document for, hey, here's our board's responses to the questions that came up, and then put that out there on the district website, almost like a frequently asked question, so people could say, oh, okay, this is what the board thinks after what they heard. The second fix is, you know, finances. Everybody always brings up finances. And I brought this up before, but I feel like it would help Lexington 1 if we had an internal auditor in place who basically was accountable and reported to the board. Then that internal auditor could say, hey, what are you guys' priorities as the board? Well, obviously, we're hearing from constituents. If they want to hear about what's the progress with projects, or how's this school going, or what are we doing with budget, then they could say, all right, we need to get these reports and put these out because my constituents want to hear that. So, that's what I would say, an internal auditor and a response from citizens' participation. Those are my two specific fixes.
Thank you, Mr. Grenade.
Yeah, so, again, like he said, there's, these do tend to turn into buzzwords. So, specifically, number one, yes, the public desperately needs more discussions in town halls to hear from the board, not just get an opportunity during three minutes apiece or 15 minutes total to speak to the board through frustrations and everything else that's going on, which tends to happen, I've done it myself. But we need to hear back. Why do you feel this way? Why are you voting a certain way? Why did you vote for this and not this way? And to provide opportunities for that would be wonderful, and even if a board member had to do it on their own, granted, board members don't have the voice of the board on their own, they can still run their own events and have opportunities to express that. Our teachers are fearful of retaliation from the board, so they need an avenue, not the board, but of the district side, and they need an avenue to be able to consult and to express themselves without fear of retaliation. On the transparency side, when in doubt, let it out. We need to err on the side of freedom. I would much rather see us using our tax dollars to defend releasing too much information than people say that we're not releasing enough. And yes, it is complex to understand finances, and if this were a private institution, I'd say that's good enough, so be it. But this is my tax dollars, and it's still my tax dollars and your tax dollars. So, putting everything out, no matter how minutia of it, no matter how granular it is, is the only viable option. FOIA requests should be presented publicly every month to explain how the district is responding to them, so nothing gets lost in the shuffle.
Thank you. We move on to the next question, this one will start with Mr. Galing. If you were elected to the board, you would work with a newly-minted superintendent and Dr. Possilway. What do you think are the hallmarks of a good superintendent-schoolboard relationship? And how would you look to build that with Possilway?
I, number one, I think this was a very good choice, our new superintendent. I think she has done a great job, actually, a lot more responsive than our last we had in here. I think to build a relationship is actually having get-together meetings, let's say, discussing. I think this has to be, you know, there has to be a two-way communications between the two at all times, so that each knows what the direction the other is trying to do. We're not getting in fights and, or this one's trying to guess what this one wants and this one's trying to guess what that one wants. So, it needs to be sat down, it needs to be some sit downs, and it needs to be done periodically, not just one time and then, we did that this year and that's what we're going to do, or at the beginning of the school year. It needs to be going through the whole school year, sitting down, talking, discussing, and if it's just individual board members, one-on-one, if the rest of the board doesn't want to meet with them, then so be it. But I think as a new board member, I think we have to listen and we have to get what they have to have done, and understand what the direction she sees the school going and all the rest. Because then the board, you know, maybe there is a difference on what, which direction the board thinks the school should be going, or what direction they want to go, or in what direction she thinks the school should be going. So, I think it has to have an open line of communication between the two, and a sit-down and discuss all these things in full. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Homsley.
So, I will say, there are several things with this new superintendent that we didn't get with our previous superintendent. Communication is definitely one of them. She tends to answer questions and answer you back in a timely manner. I have seen a lot of good things by going through meetings, the good things that she's doing as far as 45-day and 90-day deliverables with goal setting and how she is going to complete those goals. She has also set a lot of things that our previous superintendent did not do. She doesn't pass along information and say, you know, I, you know, I need to pass this along to this person and pass the ball along, and not really answer a question in a timely manner. She always does that. I will also say that she has also brought on a public packet for meetings, where, so that the communication is there and we get to follow along as a citizen during that meeting on what's going on within the schools. So, I'm seeing a lot of good things so far from her, and I continue, I will continue to follow along and see what great things that she does within our district, so.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
I think it starts with really acknowledging that the board and the superintendent are fundamentally different roles. The board has a role in what I call quality assurance and quality improvement. It is about policymaking and budgeting and setting the structure, so if we're thinking about the house and we want to build a house, the board is the architect who lays the, by the way, I'm always not great at analogies and I'm coming up with this off the top of my head, so bear with me, but the board is one who's laying the blueprint, and then we get a general contractor in, and that's the superintendent. And the superintendent is now going to call other teachers and call on the bus drivers and call on the staff and the administrators and make the house come to life. You cannot have, you could have the best general contractor in the world, but if they don't have a blueprint, they're not going to build the house, and blueprints that sit on shelves in some architectural office are not going to go anywhere. We need to work together and do our role. And one of the ways, the question was how would you specifically do that, one of the ways is starting off with a shared vision and shared goals. I see things as a model of the problem and a model of the solution. We have to agree what our model of our problem is, what are our priorities, what are the problems underlying those priorities, and then how can we agree to fix them? We set the blueprint, the superintendent builds the house.
Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. If you were elected to the board, you would work with a newly-minted superintendent and Dr. Possilway. What do you think are the hallmarks of a good superintendent-schoolboard relationship? And how would you look to build that with Dr. Possilway?
Well, a good, a good relationship would not be like the last schoolboard and superintendent relationship, where the superintendent says, ah, I want my holiday paid for by public tax money, and the schoolboard said, yeah, okay. No, the schoolboard needs to be a little bit more critical of what the superintendent says, and the superintendent needs to be a little bit more cautious about what he presents to the schoolboard. Just, it all needs to be held and done in a much more professional manner. And mutual respect, coordination, communication, understanding, and of course, the two roles, though different, are mutually compatible. They have to, we have to work together. Now, a good superintendent would recognize this and would work with the board, not against the board, and vice versa. The board will work with the superintendent. So, it's a symbiotic relationship, can't have one without the other. And of course, the superintendent will be the one that gives the whole district a little bit of direction, and the schoolboard says, yeah, okay, we'll fund that, or no, we won't fund that, or hang on, got a better idea on this. And so, that's my thoughts on it, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy.
So, in my job, I manage about 20 people, and one thing that I really look forward to is onboarding a new person, because when I onboard a new person, one of the first things I do is I have them look through our current policies and our current processes, and I'm looking for their outside perspective. Are we doing what our policies and processes say? Do we need to revise anything? So, I think that's one benefit to having a new person come in, new board members, but also a new superintendent, to bring in an outside perspective, an outside expert perspective. And so, one of the things that I'd love to see from her is just her thoughts and opinions on current policies and processes, which I'm sure she's probably already shared. I'd love the idea that she's come in with a very aggressive plan for addressing the gaps in our students' learning. But similar to what Andrea said, there are different roles there. The board has a different role than the superintendent. Communication is going to be critical in that. Something I was excited to hear, I think I gathered this from the board meeting this week, is it sounds like she calls the board members individually, maybe to connect, maybe to learn what's going on, maybe to get their thoughts about things, but I really like that, that she's proactively trying to connect with the board members who are there. So, I'm excited about that potential relationship opportunity. I do think we have a great person that we've hired in our district and somebody who's got a real plan to help us out.
Thank you, Ms. Coker.
I agree with lots of the points of the other candidates that have said, you know, we have, we have to have a great working relationship, and to do that, we have to understand each other. I think we are in a very unique situation, that we have a brand-new superintendent and we're going to have three new board members. So, we together are going to be able to determine how we want this relationship to go going forward, because we don't always want to do what's always been done. And with all new, excuse me, fresh blood, we're able to make those changes. To do that, we also have to be respectful and professional and make sure that we can bring issues back and forth to each other. Part of that role as a board member is to bring issues from the parents and staff and teachers that we hear, we bring them to the superintendent for her to address. Those are some of those things that we, as board members, don't have the authority to actually address some of those basic-level issues that are going on in our school system, but the superintendent does. So, we have to be able to work together to know that we are being open and honest and effectively communicating what's going on, so that she can address those issues, and at the same time, when she hears something at her level, she can bring it to us as a board that we can work together on. I think she's done such a great job so far with her goals, and I think we need to have continuous feedback between the board and the superintendent, just not the end-of-the-year, you know, kind of job, you know, how have you done at the end of the year? Let's do that all the time, and I think that we'll be able to have a great relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, I'm not going to have you answer your question, ask that question again, okay? I think I got it this time. Really, you're talking about the board-superintendent relationship and hallmarks of a good relationship. So, the way I think of how that relationship should work is it should be almost like a coach-and-a-player type relationship. And I'm using sports analogies because my Georgia Tech Yellow Jackets are playing tonight, but that's neither here nor there. But hallmarks are, there has to be communication, but there also has to be feedback, and then there has to be action. The other thing we're going to be looking for is an ability to own your mistakes, because mistakes will be made along the way. You're not going to do everything perfect. And at the same time, you own those mistakes and you have the ability to adjust on the fly if what you're doing is not working. I think if you have a board and a superintendent that have that type of almost coach-player relationship, and let's make it clear, the board is the coach and the superintendent is the player, let's just make that clear. And if you have that type of relationship between those two, you should be able to work through whatever different things that you run into, and you all should be able to be effective at what you're doing. The other key to that, to make that work, is you have to have empowerment in place and not micromanagement. The board has its role, the superintendent has its role, sometimes they blend, but you have to make sure that you're empowering that superintendent to carry out the vision that the board has set, and that feedback has to go back and forth all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Grenade.
... is to execute that policy as deeply as it needs, I'm sorry? That's as loud as I can get myself, thank you. All right, it's, let me start over. The purpose of the district is to execute, excuse me, the purpose of the district is to execute the board's policies as deep as they need to go. What we run into sometimes, I'm afraid, now, no one up here has direct experience with this particular element of it because we're not there yet, there's no incumbents on this board, but what I fear might happen if we're not very careful is what's happened before, and it's the tail wagging the dog. The relationship needs to be such that the board provides the parameters, the road, if you will, and the district provides the car, fills the gas, makes sure the occupants are safe on the inside, and they're actually getting to the correct destination. It is not the board's job to micromanage the functioning of the district, but to work with the superintendent. Now, that being said, no board member should have more or less authority and access to the superintendent outside of planning for a particular board meeting than any other. I do admire what Dr. Possilway has done with the priorities written out on the agenda, the strategic plan. What I would love to see is more of an openness to discuss failures, an open to discuss, okay, you know what, this didn't work, so instead of trudging ahead and saying, oh, we'll just make it work in the future, having discussions on, are there things that need to be cut out entirely? Are there things that need to be executed that terminate certain parts of the programs overall to cut back, to become, be more effective?
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
Thank you. This is a good question, but I want to go back to the last one real quick. Someone said earlier that we shouldn't put out information because people may not understand. I think that's a problem with politics in general these days, that the people in office don't put out the information because they think they know better than the public, and I think that certainly lies to the problem. But to answer this question, I think Dr. Possilway has done a, wait, excuse me, Dr. Possilway has done a great job, from coming in, being in the interim and everything else. When I went and met the candidates that week, they were here, she was very attentive, listened to every word, was a very, had great communication. I talked to people that had worked with her within, you know, the schools and within the district office, and they talked about how great she was, how good she was with the kids, and this comes from people that I thought, there's no way they're going to like this person. But that being said, it's, this question is really quite simple. It's civics one-on-one. The board is the legislative body that puts the items together for the superintendent to execute. But we've got to look at it more this way, it's like a corporation, you have a board of directors. That board of directors has a CEO. Well, the CEO answers to the board of directors, and the CEO goes through and puts out the plan that the board of directors has put together. One thing, I don't think anyone, any of these candidates up here have said anything about the accountability that the superintendent has back to the school board. The school board's got to hold whoever's in charge accountable for the decisions made and what happens throughout the district, and then make recommendations based on that accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the next question, starting with Ms. Homsley. If elected to the school board, you will likely be confronted with concerns from the public that are out of your control, including decisions that are made at the state and national level. How would you go about dealing with these kind of interactions and informing the public on one the school board can and cannot do?
One of the things that I've said before is I have educated myself on board governance, policies, procedures, laws, regulations, as well as the Freedom of Information Act. So, if I get a certain question from a community member, a citizen, a teacher, a student, and it has to do with something that I can't necessarily make any kind of leeway on as far as decisions, I know where to send them and where to go to, for them to get that information, and who to contact for that information. And that's one of the biggest things, is educating yourself and on what the roles are of a board member and where they need to go in order to get certain information, so.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
I agree, this is a question about transparency. It's a question about being open, it's a question about explaining, and it's a question about connectivity to the broader system. The school district is part of a community. The school, the community is part of a county, which is part of the state, and then part of a larger nation, and there's different levels and there's different chains of commands and systems, and we are not the end-all-be-all of all decisions. Sometimes, we're downstream. And what happens often, that I find anecdotally, is that when you ask a question to the wrong person, they ignore your email. Oh, I don't have the answer to that, that's not the school board's role. Well, that's not transparency. What people need is to be heard. They want to know somebody in an official capacity cares about them, cares about their issue, and helps them get to the right person. I am very active in the broader freedom fight in this state and in this country. I am very connected to many of our legislators in the state and very, very active in activating communities to take action, to stand up for parental rights and the rights of our children. I do this by connecting people to other people. I can't solve all the problems. I wish I could, but I can't. I don't want to be the hero, I want to be on the winning I do this by connecting people to other people. I can't solve all the problems. I wish I could, but I can't. I don't want to be the hero. I want to be on the winning team. And sometimes, the winning team means connecting people to the people that they need to connect with to get the answers that they deserve and to be open about.
Thank you. Mr. Sage.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. If elected to the school board, you will likely be confronted with concerns from the public that are out of your control, including decisions that are made at the state and national level. How would you go about dealing with these kinds of interactions and informing the public on what the school board can and cannot do?
Okay, this is something that I've been doing for years. And if I get a question, somebody asks me a question, and I don't know the answer, or it's out of my, out of my bounds, then I find out who does know the answer. Find, and say, look, this person knows the answer, and they say that the answer is this. So it's all a case of not ignoring the question or giving some spurious answer or making up an answer. It's a case of helping the person to find the right answer. Because you, they're coming to you with a question, and their question is not really what they're saying. It's, can you help me to find this information? So we have to help them to find the information. And if that means that we have to phone half a dozen people in different tiers of government to find the answer, then that's what we have to do. And if somebody wants, even if the question is totally and utterly irrelevant to us, we have to try and help them to get the right answer to their question from the right source. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shealy.
I do see a big responsibility for any board member is education. And often, I imagine, there would be questions that maybe the answer is education, either from the stance of the policy of the board, or it could be a national or a state policy answer. I'm going to flip that question a little bit, too, and to say, chain of command is also important, and that sometimes the answer's not above, it's below. And I have actually been a little surprised at the people who have brought concerns to me, even as a candidate. And the first question I ask them is, have you talked to the teacher about this? Or have you talked to the school principal about this? And the answer's no. And that often, I've gotten responses personally, that they just went straight to the top for the answer without maybe starting at a lower level, where they might have been able to get the answer that they were looking for, at least a response that would have made them happier. So I think, back to your question, sometimes the answer's above, sometimes it's a below. But I definitely see us as kind of a traffic cop, as you will. The person does want to walk away feeling like they got some direction or some guidance. Something at our hospital that we do, instead of standing on a corner saying, you go down the hall, you turn left, you turn right, you turn left again, we walk them down the hall. We walk with them left and we walk with them right. And that was, that's something I would expect the board member to do, too. Don't point them to a webpage, maybe educate them a little bit in detail about that.
Thank you. Ms. Coker.
Yes. As I said, for one of the questions earlier, is educating the public on the roles and responsibilities of the board. I think a lot of that starts, can help with some of these concerns that are out of control. But again, we have to do it in a very polite manner. Again, not just saying, look, what somebody said is not answering an email because it's not, you know, your place or not your role, or, you know, you don't have the authority to answer that. Not being combative about it. And a lot of this, too, is making sure that we bring those issues to the board and to the superintendent. Even though it may be out of our control, it may be something that we need to address as a board or as a superintendent, just to say, so everybody, I think that's the one thing with a lack of communication, sometimes even just saying that it's out of our control is answer enough if we give the background and why, instead of just ignoring it. Because I think, again, a lot, a lot of our parents feeling like they're being ignored is part of the problem. And so some of that, you know, determining whether we know that we are aware of the issue, or determine if we say something in form of a statement or something on the website. And if we get these type of questions a lot, it may need to be addressed. You know, we may think that we're only hearing it, you know, a handful of parents, but it may be very widespread that we have to address it, either via an email or something on our website. And of those things that, too, that are out of our control, make sure that we can point our stakeholders in the right direction to either get their answer or help them how to address those concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Rice.
I am sure, as a board member, and probably all, a lot of our seated board members could tell you, there's probably many questions that they get about things that are out of their control. And I'm sure, as being a board member, I would run into the same thing. The main thing that I feel like I would have to do as a board member is, once again, providing service to those constituents. It may be out of my control, but I don't think I can just sit there and assume, well, this is out of my control. I feel like I need to do a little more research. Let me find out, why is this out of my control? Did this used to be in the board's control? Is this state law? Is this federal law? Is this federal policy? What exactly is this? And try and understand it at a third-grade level so that I could turn back around and explain to them, okay, this is out of the board's control. I know you elected me to represent you, but it is out of my control, and here is why. Not just, it's out of my control because I don't feel like answering it for you. It's out of my control, and here is why. And at the same time, not be afraid to say, I don't know the answer, but I will go and see if I can find out for sure what that answer is. And guess what? Answer them back. Because I'm telling you, if people feel like you're brushing them off and you're not really listening to them and you're not really responding to them, they do not take to that kindly. So we need to actually listen, say, hey, here's what I can do, here's what I can't do, here's what I found out. Give them feedback, and then you just have to kind of move on to the next item.
Thank you. Mr. Grenat.
Yeah. I am the king of throwing out my own opinion on things that I may or may not have any control over. Sometimes, it's to a fault. But even before I decided I was going to run for school board a year ago, years before that, I had already started building relationships with legislators and other community leaders. And it's interesting, because some of them don't want as much to do with the schools, our state legislators, for example. Some of them don't want as much to do with the school board. I was actually told one time by one legislator, the schools get to do whatever they want to. And that kind of confused me a little bit. So here's what I would say. It is important, and the SCSBA Board Guidelines talk about having that healthy relationship with the legislators, and that is a critical piece to the puzzle. But I would also say that a lack of authority in an issue or a lack of control doesn't equal a lack of influence or helping someone get to the solution that they desire. Just this week, I was asked a question about someone, a parent who was trying to get information about their child getting an IEP or a 504. And I don't have those answers, but I do know lots of parents that do. And so I reached out to that person and said, hey, would you mind if I get you in touch with the parent? And the parent said, yes, I can get in touch with them. And so we worked that out. So on the one hand, we want to be cautious that we're not, yes, that we're not advising people incorrectly or promising things that we don't have control over. And again, I've, I insert my opinion often. But on the other hand, we do want to make sure we're helpful in any situation that we can be.
Thank you. Mr. Bezouti.
Thank you. I think the first thing is, as a board member, we should never pass the buck on to someone else because either we don't know the answer or someone hadn't talked to the right person or not. I also think there's a lot of people that run for office thinking that they're going to be an activist and not a board member to make decisions. And I think some people would serve a better role being an activist than being a board member. All that being said, I think the first, one thing we've got to have is honesty. If we don't know an answer, we find the answer. We tell them, look, I don't know, but I'm going to do my best to find the answer for you. I'm going to do my best to make sure this problem gets worked out for you. And if I don't, I'm going to find someone who will help me to get that problem done. And I think we've got to understand that there are roles that the legislature plays over what the school boards can do. And I think we've got to understand those, and I think we've got to let the public know what these roles are and what our roles are. Like, a lot of times, people think that the school board makes decisions that really is mandated by the state government. Now, me, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm in favor of the local rule. I think that the locals shouldn't, should make the decisions on their own, and I don't, you know, and I think that's how education could roll, because I don't think one size fits all for every district. So when we get stuck with one type of curriculum or one type of standard, may not fit our district, but may fit another district. But I think honesty is the best thing we've got to do. We've got to make sure we do what we need to do for our constituents, find the answers, don't pass the buck, and just make sure that where a question is answered, the best way we know how to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galing.
Sure. Once again, this all boils down to transparency with all of these things. I agree with Andrea about this. This whole thing is to listen to the parents, the community, go from there, and help find solutions, instead of just brushing it all off, brushing it under the rug, and hope somebody else is going to come up with an answer for this. You know, I was, in my job, I was known as a problem solver and a person who worked with these things and looked out and found these things. Working with multiple organizations, I had to, like these other people have, and they're their organizations. I had to deal with multi-agencies and all the rest of these things within the federal government, Department of Defense. You always were having to find answers, and this one thought, this one didn't know, and this one. So anyway, this is, this is, I will reach out to whoever I need to, to get the answer for these people. And if I can't, I'll be happy, I will happy to help them go find this person they need to know. And I'm happy to do this because I feel this builds, builds the trust that the parents need to see within the school board members, which I feel is very lacking at this time, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to the next question, starting with this question. We're going to go down to a minute to try to get as many questions as we can before we need to move to opening statements, to closing statements, I mean. This next question goes to Ms. Nazarenko first. As a board member, you would be tasked as one of the primary advocates for District One. Give us your elevator pitch on why a parent should want to send their child to the district schools.
Because Lexington is the absolute best town that you could live in. I'm a small-business owner in this town. We own a family wellness practice, and we choose to live here. We didn't always live here. I moved here over a decade ago because I wanted to raise my children in this town. I, the best part about this campaign are the people I've met, including the individuals on this stage. They have enriched my lives in so many ways, and I feel that way every single day I'm in our practice and I meet the families in this community. These schools are amazing schools. We all know Lexington One has some of the best schools in the state. We all also know we can improve in important ways. But what makes our schools amazing are the people who live in this town. And I love living here, and that is why any parent should want to send their child to Lexington One.
Thank you. Mr. Sage.
Well, having experienced other districts and worked for other districts, I have to say that this district is definitely one of the more professional ones. And I have no, no experience of the actual teaching side, because I don't have any children. But I have to say that the, that the, the district generally treats its staff better than most other districts. And I think the staff are generally happier here. So, and that leads to happier, happier staff lead to happier children. And I'd say, if you, if you want, if you want to send your children to a school district, look and see how happy the teachers are. If they're not happy, they're not going to get a good education. If they're happy, if the teachers are happy, the staff are happy, yes, everything's going to go well.
Thank you. Ms. Shealy.
I think one piece of our secret sauce here in Lexington is that we have a lot of people who care. They care a lot about our kids, about our community, and that shines through. The caring, but also, we have a high standard for ourselves and for our neighbors and for our community. I got the sense from our board meeting this week that state average is not good enough, and it's not for us in Lexington One. We want to be better. We want to be better than the state average. We want to be better in the nation. And so those two things together, the caring and then the high standards, and I see that with our teachers. I have a, I have a daughter right now who is struggling with algebra. That is the hardest subject for her. But I have, she has a teacher that I can tell cares. She reaches out to us. She gives us information. And there are so many teachers in our district that are just like that. So the secret sauce, the high standard, and the care.
Thank you. Ms. Coker.
I think this is going to be really hard to answer in 60 seconds. Because I do, I did not grow up in this district, but I absolutely love it. I was asked at one point by my sister if I'd ever be willing to move back up to the upstate. And I looked at her like she was crazy, and I said, no, this place is fabulous. It's, you know, with small community, small-town feel, no matter where you go, whether if you're at one of our bigger high schools or whether if you're at one of our smaller high schools. It is truly a family feel. People just, we help each other out, a lot of caring across the board. But addition to that, the opportunities that we afford our children, not just the honors and AP and IB programs, but our foreign language immersion programs and our different centers for learning. We have some absolutely fabulous opportunities for our children that I have not heard of anywhere else, especially in the state, and some friends that live in different states. And they're just dumbfounded with the things that our kids do, especially with the partial immersion. And I just think that, there's so much wonderful things to say, but it's a wonderful district, and I'm happy to be running for board.
Thank you. Mr. Rice.
Then you're, I understand you're, and you're excited. The state agent has already told you about now that we have great schools. So I'm not going to tell you we have these great schools. But I will tell you this, in those great schools, the reason they're great is because we have teachers that actually care. We have administrators that are engaged. We have employees everywhere, from the bus driver to the janitor, that they really care about where they work and that environment that they're in. Also, we have wonderful programs. We have like a language immersion program for students in elementary school. Can you imagine your child, when you decide to travel internationally to Spain because your child was in immersion program in Lexington One, that they can speak fluently for you when you travel? I mean, all districts don't have that. And we have a wonderful, caring community. And the number-one thing that I would say is, we actually have a diverse community. We have diverse people throughout this, this particular district, but at the same time, spirit of harmony and unity with each other. And that's what's great about Lexington One.
Thank you. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you. You know, we do have compassion here, and we have a framework that's been set for many, many, many years of academic excellence. Our athletics lead the state, they lead the nation, they lead the world. Our music programs inspired me as I was growing up, and now is inspiring my son to want to begin to learn his first instrument, which is, makes me very, very happy because I can help him with that. The foreign language immersion programs are the best anywhere, top-notch, nobody can touch them. We have money to invest in our children. Some of it needs to be managed a little bit better, but it is there. That is a benefit. We have rural experiences, we have historical experiences here. We are close enough to Columbia to be able to provide trips to the State House to meet our legislators and to see how government works. We're close enough for physics to be able to go to the state fair. We're close enough to, you know, many places, many universities, to be able to grasp those experiences. And so there's, there's, our location, 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 and our pride and our academics drives us like no other district I've ever seen.
Thank you. Mr. Bezouti.
No problem. One word can kind of sum up what's good about Lexington District One, and that's community. You hear a lot of people talk, say Lexington. Lexington's so much more than just Lexington. There's other schools, there's Gilbert, there's White Nile, there's that area. That's what's good about this district. It's not just one location, it's spread out, different backgrounds from everyone, and they all care about the community. They all come together to make stuff to get done. One of my favorite things is, as we call it out in Gilbert America, is Friday Night Lights. The community comes together to watch sports. It is that hometown feel. The schools have prepared a lot of us for our future. I'm a product of Lexington One. I'm a product of Lexington One. Graduated with a scholarship to go on to Carolina because of the great teachers in Lexington District One. We do have good state program, athletic programs and band programs and chorus programs. And they strive to make sure everyone is reaching their potential in each endeavor they do. And I think that's the main thing is everyone cares. The best of the best is here. The industry, the lake, everything is here that's great about Lexington One. And just remember, it's not just Lexington, but we have other schools as well and we need to remember that through everything.
Thank you. Mr. Gayle?
Sure. I just, I want to say, I agree with everybody else here, but the reason, I've been here for 36 years and the reason I moved here was for the schools. I've never really worked here until 15 years ago when I opened a business here in town. I commuted to DC, to Warner Robbins, wherever the Department of Defense, you know, I needed to be at for a location. My wife, our kids grew up here, started, you know, Lexington Elementary, it was a new school at the time, went up through that, Lexington Middle, intermediate, Lexington High School. I've been through this district and it's, it's a fabulous place and it's really, the people are great in this, in this whole area here. It rocks where we live. But there's always room for improvement and that, that's why I'm running for school board is I think there's room for improvement within the board itself and in the schools. There's still issues that need to be resolved within this and, you know, going for that and I look forward to serving the community and being, you know, for another 30 years or whatever, or another term at least. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Holmesley?
I actually moved to Lexington in 2011. I originally grew up in Ermo, going to Lexington, Richland District Five schools. And as much as I love Ermo and going to Ermo High School and all the teachers there, I always, you know, wanted to move to Lexington and have my teach, have my kids go to the schools here because that's all they would talk about is how great the schools were here. But as I've come and moved here, I have also been introduced to this community. I have met a lot of great teachers, a lot of great staff, parents. With my daughter, she, she actually started kindergarten last year and I got to really get to know a lot of the parents. I got to know some of the custodians that will actually come in during the summer and wax those floors so they are shining and beautiful and clean because they love the schools here. They're passionate and I'm passionate about this community. I'm passionate.
Thank you. That's your time.
So.
All right. We're moving on to the next question, starting with Mr. Sage. How do you feel the district is preparing students for different avenues after secondary education, from four-year colleges to technical schools and other options? How do you feel the district might improve in this regard and how would you help it do so?
Okay, can you repeat it?
Yes. How do you feel the district is preparing students for different avenues after secondary education, from four-year colleges to technical schools and other options? How do you feel the district might improve in this regard and how would you help it do so?
Oh boy. That's another question I thought about. Yeah, the, the, there's a whole, the district has a whole range of different educational options. And one of the things that I've been very impressed by, because I, I deal with the special education children. And one of the things that really impresses me is how they're, they're still teaching the special ed children right up until they're 21 in the high schools. And that, that I think is really, really great because they're preparing them for life and it might not be a, an academic life, but they're preparing for, for life and they'll be able to come out really well. And of course they've got the further education as well, and I'm running out of time. And yeah, so they've got the further education as well, right up then, there's a whole range of education, including the university even. So, yeah, okay, I run out of time.
Thank you. Ms. Shealy?
So I grew up in Lexington One and when I was coming through the schools, I don't remember much focus at all being on alternate tracks besides graduation, heading to college. I will say, as my kids are coming up through the schools, and two of them are in the high school, one in the middle school, I'm hearing more and seeing more about different opportunities and different tracking that we're doing that's outside of just focus on college. So I feel like I am seeing some of that, but I would like to see more of that. I have to admit, in the middle school particularly, maybe some introduction there of some of the alternatives. I know it's really early for the kids to be thinking, what am I going to do after I graduate from high school? But I think that's where we can start introducing some of the concepts and ideas, not only to the kids, but also to the parents. Because parents may not understand what other options there are out there besides just the college track. And if they notice their, their kids may not be as perfectly aligned for the college track, that may be a way to start.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
I think the district does a wonderful job, especially compared to the district I went to in the upstate. I don't ever remember, even the best that she doesn't remember some of these things. I, I definitely don't. But I do remember hearing a story that my husband Hollis told me that while he was at Gilbert High, one of his classes, he learned how to drive a tractor. And I thought that was just like the coolest thing ever, that they got to do other things than just, you know, our basic learning because it helps prepare them if they're going to do something else. For our Lexington Technology Center, we have all these avenues too that can help them, whether those classes are going to help them with a four-year education or technical school or anything like that. We have our Centers for Advanced Studies and Nick can probably talk about this when he goes through it, but Gilbert High has an acronym for the types of career you have in the future, whether it's going straight into employment, military, four-year school or tech school. And they talk about that throughout the time and I think that is absolutely wonderful and something that would be great widespread, is just helping make sure everyone understands their opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
Yes. How do you feel the district is preparing students for different avenues after secondary education, from four-year colleges to technical schools and other options? How do you feel the district might improve in this regard and how would you help it do so?
Okay. I feel like the district does a great job at preparing students for whatever path they want to post, you know, high school. I've noticed that one of the mantras of the district is empowering each child to design the future. But not only is that just a mantra, I've seen them actually put effort into it because we've, there's some encouragement for students that don't want to go to four-year college to, to go to technical school and there's a lot of dual enrollment that's available there. LTC is the best kept secret we've ever had. I mean, we've got things like pharmacology programs that Nephron Pharmaceuticals funds and students can come right out making 60 or 70 thousand dollars a year, which could almost change a family's, you know, financial future. Also, I've seen the same thing with if they want to come right out in the job market and start performing, they're able to do that. And also a lot of the colleges, their honors colleges always want our students to come there. And so the way we'd improve that is just have more access to these programs at all of the high schools and not just one particular high school. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Grenade?
Thank you. There are, I'm not an expert on the, the statistics of graduates in this district. I'm not quite there yet with my own child. I look forward to receiving more information in the coming years. My son's 11, who's sitting in the front row and we will get there, we will get there. I do, like another candidate said, I do not remember a lot of discussion of what to do if you are not college bound. And some of the things I think would help us in that regard is continuing with something that has become more popular recently, which is financial literacy. Teaching children how to prepare for life, not loans. A gap year between high school and college to help work and save, to teach ethic, work ethic. In-state return incentives for teachers that graduate and want to come back into this district who came from it. Presenting local job opportunities to students, even in, in high school who, when we find them. The STEM certifications and things like that, continuing to partner with the universities and with Nephron and other groups is a fantastic approach. But I, I would like to see more of a focus on responsibility and not a guarantee of success because going to college does not guarantee success.
Thank you. Mr. Pizzuti?
As I said at the very first question, I think the challenge is to make sure every child reaches their full potential. And I think to do that, first we need to start to make sure every school is equal in the terms of every different type of curriculum is offered there. We need to make sure that every AP course is available for those that are college bound. We need to make sure that the agricultural events, I know Harry had talked earlier about riding a tractor. I can tell you in Gilbert, Peoria and FFA is a really good program to get people prepared. And to carry on, one thing is I do, one thing I do really like about is what's something Gilbert High School does. And they call, what is your E? And there's three Es and is, are you, what is, are you enrolled? Are you enlisted? Are you employed? So they're taking that thing, they're taking that time to make sure that they know that there's different options for everyone. And I think every school needs to push that. I think everyone needs to know that, look, you may not be going to college, but you can have these opportunities. There is a huge lack in the, in the talent pool right now in the work sector. Go to a trade school, come out working. There's just different options you can take. Join our military, greatest military in the world. So we should, different options. So think, when you talk to your student, what is your E?
Thank you. Mr. Gayle?
Sure. This is a real passion for me on this one because I feel right now, I, I talk to a lot of customers, a lot of the kids and things like this, I'm pretty active in a lot, a lot of the things with these, with our community. And the, a lot of them are just, they tell me, and I sit on Lexington Technology Center, I sit on the advisory committee for them. So I, you know, I see it too. I've tried to help, tried to get the kids to come in there and try to do like internships, do things like that with our business. Very difficult. The, there is, I'm telling, being told, majority of the time, they, they're pushed to go to college. They need the four, they need that four-year degree. And I feel that's not always the scent, you know, there is, and I have two children. One, one went all the way up and finished his PhD. I have another one that got out of high school and that, you know, but he's doing very successful, but he's done something else. And so I, I really feel the schools, you know, we, we talk like we're all doing it, but I'm, I'm not, that's not what I'm hearing when I talk to a lot of the kids. They're being more focused to go, they need to go to college, period. You know, that was like the only, the only holy grail, it's going to make them the money.
Thank you. Ms. Holmesley?
So there's a lot of things that this district does and does well. They have a lot of great opportunities as far as like the Lexington Technology Center, the North Lake Community Learning Center, all of these great things. But one of the things that I have noticed through going through meetings is the district really pushes hard and focuses more on graduation and graduating and a little less on how, you know, how educated they are on, in the process to get there. So you're sending them off from graduate, to graduate, to graduate and to go off into the world, but they don't have the tools necessary to be able to live and succeed in society. So that is one of the things that I think that this district should focus on, a little bit more on, early on, elementary school, middle school.
Thank you. Ms. Nazarenko?
We live in a society where culturally we value achievement. We value achievement over happiness. We do. We talk about happiness, but what we treat, teach our children is the one who achieves is successful, not the one who lives a content life is successful. And this needs to infiltrate our education system, this cultural shift. We need to begin inspiring children to be lifelong learners and we do that by unlocking the things that naturally interest them. We do that by offering a variety of programs in the music and the arts, by offering community mentorships in our amazing businesses in our community. We offer that by integrating personalized and authentic learning opportunities in the classroom that make children say, yes, this is what I want to do for the rest of my life and it doesn't matter if I go to college or go to tech school or take a year off or what my other achievement mechanism is because I want to live a content life and my school district inspired that.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, which starts with Ms. Shealy. Fiscal accountability is the responsibility of the board and is necessary for taxpayer trust. Do you have any budgetary concerns when it comes to the current operations in District One? If so, how would you go about trying to solve?
So as I mentioned before, finances is definitely an area of interest of mine. One thing I, I felt like I heard at our board meeting by our new CFO was talking about tightening up certain processes. She had one process that she wanted to refine through the use of a form. I'm thinking that's probably an area of opportunity for us, that probably as she continues to look and dig, and again, I love new people coming in because new people come in, bring fresh eyes, that that would be something that we're probably going to be looking at. Also, again, back to the transparency, I do believe that the average person is not going to understand all the financials of the district. And so we do need to help them understand and feel that our finances are being spent efficiently and effectively. Potentially, the idea of an external audit is something we potentially could look at, maybe before an internal audit, but if Chris and I get on together, I'm sure we could figure that out.
Thank you, Ms. Coker.
Yes. And it's, it's one of our main things is fiscal responsibility. I believe that we need to make sure that we are following state procurement laws. One thing that we also need to look at is not just that, but with our internal policies. Do any of them need to be revised? We have actually a lot of policies that are very old. Some of them date back to 1985. A lot of things have changed since then, but a lot of things have really changed since COVID, especially with regards to money. I do believe that we need to look at those policies to see how we can be better stewards because just things have changed in terms of the cost, workforce, availability of materials, supply chain. So a lot of those things are outside of our control and the way we maybe have been doing things in the past may not work now because of the financial environment of the world today. And so I believe that we need to make sure we look through those, make sure we're following the rules, change any of those policies that do not work for the best and go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Lawrence, could you repeat the question for me?
I can. Fiscal accountability is the responsibility of the board and is necessary for taxpayer trust. Do you have any budgetary concerns when it comes to current operations in District One? If so, how would you go about trying to solve them?
Yes. Biggest concern that I have right now is... Is that on? Yes. Okay, great. Biggest concern I have concerning the budget is, are we as a district providing the mental health support that we need? You know, when I say mental health, many times I may be talking about mental health for our students because I tell you, from talking to a lot of our teachers in the district, coming out of COVID especially, a lot of the disciplinary issues that they're seeing in their classrooms stems from not having the mental health support for those students to work through certain issues that they have. So I would say that. The other thing is, sometimes we forget about how employees were stressed from going through the pandemic and so forth. So I also wonder if budget wise, can we support like an employee assistance program to deal with the different stresses of life that our employees may also face? Because I know as, with the foundation, we've actually talked about some of those things, but I'd like to see that as a part of the district's core budget.
Thank you. Mr. Grenade?
You know, the, this is probably the largest amount of money that anyone in this area deals with from, most of the time. You're talking about a third of a billion dollars annually and it's a lot of zeros and I certainly have never been, had that particular responsibility, but I'm looking forward to learning how to engage in that. But I'm also grateful for competent CFOs and staff that can do that. I'm going to come back to though, but we have four walls that we need to build around our, our budgets. That is security, salary, facilities and curriculum. And anything outside of that, we need to figure out what is not working and reallocate those funds so that year after year, we're not having to say, well, why can't we give our teachers a raise? The money's been there, we've had more money this year than we ever had before. Where's that money going? You know? So that's, that's what I'd really love to focus on. Also, me personally, I know there's an Act 388 and I don't, I don't always have all the information on this, but I have made a promise that I'm never going to vote to increase the available millage to raise taxes in this area. I'm not going to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Pizzuti?
Yeah, I think when it comes to fiscal responsibility, unlike Erin said, I am one of the ones that have experienced in this, this range of money. I have, I'm responsible for signing off on contracts that range from $5,000 up to a couple hundred million dollars. But with that being said, I have three things that I think we need to look at. One is if elected, I will push for an independent third-party external audit. Then that's the only way we're going to find the, the true efficiency of the districts, how they're spending the money. Second thing is, I need to think, we need to talk to the teachers and talk to them about what kind of curriculum they're being told they have to talk. A lot of teachers come up to me and have said, hey, why are we spending all this money on these curriculums that we hate to teach? There's another area we can look at. And the third thing I believe when you look at is actual money going to the classroom. I said earlier about the teachers asking for donations, but I think a lot of the stuff, when you look at our accounting, it shows it as educational support and going to the classroom, but I don't think all of it's actually going to the classroom. So we need to make sure that actual money that's listed for there is actually going to the teacher in the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Gayle?
Sure. I believe, yes, there needs to be more physical oversight in all this because right now, you know, and they, everybody else has mentioned here, physical oversight, we need to look at this. Somebody else needs to come in and look, if they've been the same auditors going over the same books, year after year after year, things happen. Look, look just across the river over in Richland County, some really things happen with that. This is a large amount of money. As Nick said, I used to work, manage projects for the Department of Defense, over 200 million and better. I know exactly what's going on this. We, we, and I'm not going to vote for millage rate increases, I don't want to see these I don't want to see these things unless we can ju, need to look at this and get the most bang for our bucks out of what's being spent. I don't think we're doing that with a lot of things I'm seeing at this current time. It's really just, and nobody's actually, you try to see what they're spending, and you just can't get down to the nitty-gritty of what's being spent and where the money goes currently this time.
Thank you, Ms. Honsley.
Well, as I said before, fiscal transparency and responsibility is very important to me. I have looked into the purchasing card statements, into the finances. I've made plenty of Freedom of Information Act requests, and I think the focus should be finances, law, and policy. Business owners pay the highest taxes for our district schools. Retirees want to protect their nest egg and don't want to see the tax dollars misused. Teachers need money to funnel into the classrooms, not tied up in fancy capital projects. So I think finances, they affect everybody in the system, and so it's very important that we be completely and totally honest with the fact that we need to look into those, and the best way to do that is a comprehensive financial audit.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
I think there's two aspects to this question. There's what has happened with our finances in the past, and a lot of unanswered questions related to that, and when you compound that with what's going on with neighboring districts, these are valid concerns that taxpayers have. We need answers to the unanswered questions through a comprehensive and independent audit. But then there's how do we move to the future? And that is, how do we utilize the money that we do have in ways that actually help us achieve our goals? When we look across the schools, in all of the schools across the district, there are a lot of dollars being spent on things that we don't know if they work. All of the programs that are being implemented district-wide, do we have any acknowledge, any sort of feedback on their, their effectiveness? If it's not translating to helping our children achieve, helping our children and improving our, our children's academic futures, why are we doing it? What are we doing in our district to help our kids? We need to stop doing things that don't work, stop buying services that don't work, and start spending our money wisely and utilizing resources to get to the outcomes we deserve.
Mr. Sage.
Well, there's definitely a lot, a lot that could be improved with the finances. Now, the one thing nobody has mentioned is how they're hemorrhaging bus drivers. You've got, and when I started working here, there, every single bus in White Nile was out on a run. Now there's 15, 20 just sitting idle because there are no drivers. Driver salaries have gone up, but I think not enough to reflect the cost of living. I think that's probably one of the reasons why they're losing, losing drivers. But the whole, this, this whole idea that they're just not paying the staff they need enough, so they're losing all the staff they need, and staffing is their major problem. And then of course, misspending on things like foreign holidays, and the current superintendent had a rental home paid for by the taxpayer until she was voted in just now.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. We will start with Ms. Coker. This year's SC school, SC school report cards were released this week. Did you get a chance to look at the results for District One? If so, how do you feel about the district's performance? Were there areas of concern for you? How would you address them?
One of my main concerns, and one of my main, for running, is the deficient, learning deficiency due to COVID. And those numbers that were presented at the board meeting on Tuesday showed that. I felt a little better, or not quite as bad, is that we seem to be doing better than the rest of the state, but there is a clear deficiency due to our non-traditional learning environment. It is very concerning that math is down, even more so than ELA. One of the things that I've said that we need to determine that with the children, what else are they, losses are they experiencing because of COVID? And we need to provide support for our teachers and resources to remedy those deficiencies and bring them back up. Not only bring them back up to where we were pre-COVID, but to continue to increase. Overall, our district seems, our children seem to perform better than the state average, which is absolutely wonderful, but we can do better.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Yes, I did not get a chance to see the report card, but like Ms. Coker said, I did actually pay very close attention to the report that was done at the school board meeting Tuesday night. In fact, I watched it live there, but then I came back and watched it again yesterday, just, just to see where we were. And for those of you who don't know my background, my background is I'm a mechanical engineer and work as a utilities operations manager, and so something that's just near and dear to my heart is math. And for me to see where we were performing percentile-wise with math and how it dropped really discouraged me, because guess what? Even people who come into entry-level jobs at the facility where we work have to be good in math, or we have to tutor them in math. So I had some concerns with that, and I was also concerned with where we were in U.S. history. Many people talk about ELA and math, but they don't talk about history. My concern about history is if you don't know your history, you're doomed to repeat it. And so I'm really concerned with where our country is, that our kids are not learning what they need to learn about this country that we live in.
Thank you, Mr. Grenade.
I would echo that, that the knowledge of our constitution is sadly falling by the wayside. As a matter of fact, recently, the Department of Education issued some staggering results on that issue, and U.S. history and the constitution had an extremely low success rate, and I found that just appalling. We need to get back into that. No, I did not, I have not read the report yet. I did watch some soundbites on it. There are learning deficiencies, obviously, everyone will admit that. I, I tend to link that more directly to one and a half years of not allowing parents to understand what is going on inside the walls of the school. And since parents have been allowed to come back more now, I've had a wonderful opportunities to discuss through emails with my son's teachers and really figuring out what things we can do to make him, make it better for him behaviorally and even academically. They were severely dis-serviced by disqualifying, disallowing parents into the buildings, and we've got a lot of gap to pick up because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
One thing what I think of about deficiencies is, are we, are we looking at it across the board? We know there's deficiencies between the Lexington Riverloaf Schools and then the other schools in the area, Pillion, Gilbert, and White Nile, and we need to find out where those deficiencies lie and make sure we bring everyone up on the same level. But one thing I've been taught my whole life by my parents, and I preach it to my kids, is always expect the best, always do your best, don't settle for anything. So I think that's one thing we have to bring back, is make sure that we're not settling on status quo. We need to make sure that we're pushing everyone forward to try their best, not just sit there and be comfortable with what they're doing, but always improve themselves. If you reach a certain point, reach higher. When I talk about, as a student, meeting their full potential, I mean it, and I'm saying full potential. So that's why deficiencies, we need to make sure that we reach high, help these students reach their potential, and always make sure that we're striving for the best.
Thank you, Mr. Galing.
Sure. You know, I've seen these reports they're talking about, also seen this in, I don't know if anybody went back further, from 2010 to 19, before COVID. We actually had a downturn going that period, too. It's not just happened, COVID did a big dive to us, but it was happening before this. So we've been, I'd say as a school district, have been failing. All this, COVID just expedited the whole process on top of all this stuff. You know, we're, the thing I looked at is they're showing the rates gone down, but our, our graduation rate has increased. I'm going, so we've lowered our standards, these things have fallen, but we're graduating more kids. So they're not ready to meet the world, as everybody here has mentioned. Can they do, can they balance a checkbook? Can they even read cursive writing? We're talking about Constitution, they can't read the Constitution as written because they can't read cursive. So let's get down to it. We're failing as a district on that, not just as Lexington, but the whole state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Honsley.
I'm going to have to say I completely agree with you on this. I sat in Tuesday night's meeting with Ms., with Dr. Phillips, when he was sitting up there, and he was showing these graphs, and it's like, these graphs are great, these are wonderful, but what are we going to do next? Ms. Henson, one of the board members, she asked, so what's next? What now? And that's exactly right. Where, what plan do we have to make the academic learning loss that we have currently, that we've had before COVID, better? How can we, how can we make it better? We have a year and a third worth of growth that we need to achieve every year, and we really need to recruit and retain quality teachers within our schools. We also need to empower our teachers as well. Let them know that what they're doing, they need to continue to be able to, to teach and, and do it well. They went to school for a reason, and they should be able to, to be able to show what they, what they know, so.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
As a psychologist, one of the roles I play is that of professional evaluator, so I was dorkishly excited to look at that data. And, and the piece that stood out to me was rather sobering, and it's a nuanced piece. Teacher's perceptions of safety was at about at 80%, give or take, don't quote me on the number, but it was around 80%. Teachers know what the protocols are in the school, and they know how well they're being implemented in. Overall, they felt fairly safe. Students was at about 40%. Our students do not feel safe. Neurologically, you cannot learn in a state of fear. We need to make our children, it's a fundamental need to feel safety. And despite what we're doing and our protocols and our teachers, and despite what's happening, our children don't feel safe, whether it's physical safety from external threats or internal psychological safety from bullying, or just fear in general from our cultural level. Our children need to feel safe, and that data illustrated as loud as you could see that our children are not being communicated that they are safe and loved.
Mr. Sage.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, I can. This year's SC school report cards were released this week. Did you get a chance to look at the results for District One? If so, how do you feel about the district's performance? Were there areas of concern for your, for you, and if so, how would you address them?
Okay, well, as, as the, my predecessor said, I've only heard soundbites and not actually studied the reports in detail, but it does seem to me that during COVID, educational standards dropped somewhat. Not just dropped in terms of handing out As like, like they were candy, but the, the general education level dropped. And it was interesting to compare that with the education level from homeschoolers and from, and from these traditional online schools, which are, had better results. It's no condemnation of anybody, it's just that they, I think the teachers here were not that well-prepared for COVID, and we need to implement a strategy so they can be prepared if, if this kind of thing ever happens again.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy.
So I've not seen the report card specifically, but I did watch the board meeting this, this week, and yeah, I have a theory that I feel like I've got the demographics in my home to reflect, and that's, I've got two kids who were in middle school in the midst of COVID, and I feel like middle school in particular has been hit the hardest. It's when you've got very fast growth at a time when kids are trying to adjust and figure things out. I feel like the data is supporting that, but also, we've got our, I've got two kids now taking algebra, as I mentioned, that also are on IEPs. And those IEP kids, I also feel like are one of those at-risk demographics. Now, Ms. Dana asks, what next? And I agree, we all have that question, but what I'm excited to have seen is that we have an aggressive plan in our district. I'm excited to learn more of the details about that plan, but a 45-day and 90-day plan, and the fact that it's tailored to each of our different schools, who are going to have slightly different needs, I'm excited to see that and to learn more about it.
Thank you. Squeeze in one last question before closing statements, starting with Mr. Rice. What is one challenge you feel the district faces that hasn't yet been discussed tonight, and what would you do to solve it?
I turn this on. Still, I tell you, I have a problem with the microphone. One challenge I think that has not been discussed tonight is really hearing the voice of the teachers and what the teachers want. I hear so many people talk about teachers should be doing that, and teachers should be doing this, and teachers are challenged with this, and teachers are challenged with that. But the big thing I see is, teachers are at a point now where, as I've talked to them, they're saying, everybody, we, we have a passion for, for teaching, and everybody's trying to tell us how it is that we're supposed to teach, but nobody stops and asks us, what is it that you need? You know, everybody wants to say, the board should do this, the board should do that, the district should do this, but nobody takes the time to ask the teacher what the teacher needs. And I just feel like that's one thing that I bring to the table, is I'm actually talking to teachers and finding out from teachers what it is they're facing and what it is that they actually want.
Thank you, Mr. Grenade.
It's the first time I've done this. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, I can. What is one challenge you feel the district faces that hasn't been discussed tonight, and what would you do about solving it?
Oh, so many, but one of the things that we have not discussed is the sudden love affair that the entire education system has with my children's psyche, and the social-emotional baggage that they want to take on themselves, and school counselors and teachers and everyone else, suddenly, everyone is an expert on managing my son's social-emotional behavior and psychological abilities, and that whether I like it or not, it's ingrained in the curriculum, and I either have to deal with it or take my kid out of public school. That is one thing I absolutely 100% do not agree with, that opens the door to way too many emotion, not emotional, but cultural problems, namely, the generic social-emotional learning is a doorway and a pathway to CRT. Even if it is not currently taught in the district, it, it opens the door to many things that I am not tolerant of, playing games with pronouns and alphabet soup and things like that, and no one's talking about this, but it is occurring in our district. The sexualization of our children is alive and well, and we must stop it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
So someone with a construction, finance, and infrastructure background, one thing that we haven't talked about tonight, but it runs pretty true to self, I want to look at, is the growth of the district and how we handle that growth. We know Lexington County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, so we can't stop the growth, but we got to learn how to manage that growth. And we know as stewards of, of the taxpayers, we got to make sure that we work with all parties involved in making decisions when it comes to infrastructure of our schools and where they're being built. We can't just make the, the decision unilaterally by ourselves. We have to make sure that we keep the county involved, we keep municipalities involved, and we keep the taxpayers involved in this discussion. So making sure that we make sure that the, the quality of the, of the product of what we put out there is very good and is a steward of, and we, excuse me, and we are stewards of what the taxpayers need.
Thank you, Mr. Galing.
With Erin on this one, I have to agree, and that was my big thing, I'm running on this, is CRT, SEL, this belongs no place in Lexington School District, needs no place. They do not, the, the social-emotional learning, as Erin, as Erin said, is the gateway to CRT and all the rest. Our kids don't need this, this is, these are issues for the parents. They don't need to be analyzed and discussed and all the rest of these things. It's toxic for these kind of things to go on in our district. And, you know, it's just unacceptable. I think we have to stop these, these, these kind of programs, stop them cold on their feet, because, like I say, I just, just hit me with what hadn't thought, and that was one thing we hadn't discussed on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Honsley.
All right, so I'm going to talk about a controversial topic here, but I am going to get into a little bit more of a happier ending. So SEL, a lot of people, is very controversial, but I will say that one of the groups that utilize SEL is the special needs kids. I will say that I would, I would like to see maybe a superintendent advisory council for parents with kids with special needs and IEPs. I have spoken with a lot of parents that feel like they're alone and they have no one to talk to, and no one to hear them. They go through these IEP meetings, and they feel like they're just going through the motions, and that they're not being heard, and they're not being listened to, and that they're just being passed along, and so they just feel like they're alone. I feel like we need to foster a sense of community between our sped, our sped families, and many of them feel that even though they're navigating the system alone, we need to advocate for their children and give them some support necessary to help them.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
I recently spoke to some high school students and some middle school students, and I said to them, what do you want to see changed in the schools? Simple question, right? They couldn't answer it. Multiple students. At first, they said to me, you don't care. I said, I, I do care. No, you don't. I said, yeah, I do. No, we'll get in trouble if we say something. We'll get in trouble if we voice our opinion, and this is not a few students, I've asked many students. What do you want to see changed? I'm, I'm running for board, and I care what you have to say, and they didn't believe me. That's concerning. If we want to create self-governing citizens, we have to teach our children how to critically think and voice their opinions. We have to give them leadership and opportunities to stand up for it, and we have to believe what they say. They are our future, and we need to engage them in their own future. Our student voices are an important, an important part of this, and our students must remain central to everything we do.
Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Oh, Andrea is absolutely right. We need to teach children to think for themselves. And as regards the, the curriculum, I think we, we really need to look hard at the curriculum we're teaching the children. We need to simplify it a little bit and get some of the more bogus subjects out, and just, and for example, I think there's one CRT, I don't think it's taught here, but that's an example of one of the more bogus subjects. But just simplify it so that the students can come out with, instead of two or three bogus subjects and maybe, and maybe math, give them two sessions of math. Get them really good in the subjects that matter in this world, like the maths, the science, the languages, the English, the history, the geography, you know, the, the traditional subjects, the sciences, and perhaps computing as well.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy.
The challenge I want to focus on is our teachers. They are the front line to our students' education, they're the backbone to our, our district's education. So three things for them. Recruitment and retention, obviously, is a focus for us. One, when we onboard our teachers, it's One, when we onboard our teachers, it's gotta be a strong process. Potentially there could be a mentoring component there if it's not already. Two, we've got to have a positive workplace culture for our teachers and that positive culture is set by all of us. If they don't have a positive culture, they're not gonna wanna be in our schools. But we also have to help support their professional growth. That's very important for these teachers who are constantly learning just like the rest of us. I talk with a lot of teachers with two kids on IEPs, trust me. And one thing I make a concerted effort to do is to thank them and to encourage them and to tell them, this is what you're doing that's helping me and my kids. Thank you. And it's shocking how often they seem surprised to hear that.
Thank you, Ms. Coker.
I also believe one challenge that we haven't talked about tonight is, um, teacher and staff support. Um, in addition to supporting them professionally, we need to show them that they are our most important resource. Without them, our kids cannot reach their highest potential. Um, with that, with that support is we need to make sure that there are equal opportunities across the district, not the mindset that their one school has a better, better basic resources or opportunities. We don't want our staff, our teachers leaving one school to go to the other one just because of perception that it's better. Um, with that, um, and the ways to fix one of these challenges is to provide teachers, staff and administrators with a way to voice their concerns and feedback on district policies without fear of re, excuse me, retaliation or repercussions. The school board and central services staff need to know what works and what doesn't and how their policies affect staff on a daily basis. It's really easy for a teacher to praise a policy and share how it's helped them, but it's really hard if a policy makes their job more difficult.
Thank you. Uh, it's now time to move to closing statements, uh, one minute each for each candidate. We will start in the reverse order from where we started the questions, so Ms. Coker, you will begin.
Thank you. Um, like with anything in most of, um, pretty much everybody up here, communication is key. We have, um, a perception and reality of a lack of communication. Um, it depends on what level it comes to fruition for each person, but we need to communicate better, um, between the board, the district and school administrator, teachers, parents and community in general. Um, we have to fix that, we have to communicate better. Um, we also have to work some of the learning deficiencies that are going on because of our non-traditional learning environment and that includes providing, um, resources and support for our teachers to be able to help our children reach their highest potential. I am passionate about our students and I really truly believe that we need to do what's best for each of them, which looks different for each of them. So we need to be able to help them individually, meet whatever goals they have and provide ways for our, um, teachers and staff to support them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy.
As I mentioned before, I grew up in Lexington District One and my kids are in District One schools. I'm proud to be a part of this district and I'm proud to be a part of this community. I'm running for no other reason than that I love this district. I love this community and I wanna give back to it. That's it. I do believe that our primary focus needs to be on closing the educational gaps in our, in our students' learning right now. A component of that is supporting their social and emotional needs. There are a lot of kids that are hurting and like Andrea mentioned, they can't focus on school if they have other challenges in advance that haven't been addressed. So I feel like I bring a lot of great skills from finance to working with people to, uh, contract negotiations even, cause again, communication is a skill and it's an important one for a board member. So again, I'm excited to be running as a part of this board. I think we got a lot of great people, we have a great community, but we've got to do it together and keep it in mind, our students must come first.
Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Okay, the biggest, biggest thing I, I can see is we need, we need to have a strong grip on the finances in this district and not, no more spending on any of these fancy projects or, or projects that put money in buddies' pockets. We need to distribute the money more fairly so that the lowest paid get a living wage and they don't have to su- survive off social handouts. And we need to, to retain more bus drivers, there just aren't enough, so drivers having to do triple routing just to take all the students home. Some students don't get home till six o'clock. And we need to, we need to really control that money and distribute it fairly where it needs to be spent, not where Joe thinks his buddy wants it to, you know, wants, uh, to make a few extra bucks.
Thank you, Ms. Nazarenko.
It's been mentioned a lot of times that education is perhaps the most important issue coming up in these midterms elect, midterm elections and I wholeheartedly agree because what you are voting for in this election is not just who wants to sit on this board, what you are voting for is who shares your vision of the future because education and our children are the pathway to creating a better world. There is no surprise that the world that our children has been given is not the one that they deserve. It's just, it's just not. And we could do better to protect our children, to support our children and to help our children thrive. I'm often asked if I'm, if I'm supporting the teachers or supporting the parents as if they are against each other. I'm supporting the children and I recognize that the expertise of the teachers and the values of the parents are both essential components to healthy youth development. I'm running to the kids so we could create a better education system, a better world and fight for the betterment of all of our children and we do that together.
Thank you, Ms. Holmesley.
Um, I started following this board, uh, really heavily when my, when my daughter, um, actually started to get ready to attend kindergarten, um, and I decided that I wanted to get even more involved. Um, I wanted to truly understand the process and keep myself informed of decisions that make, that they make with the school board and how they, and understand that they play a vital role, um, in the decision-making process, um, in our public education system. Um, every decision that they make affects every single citizen here in Lexington One and I want to, I would like to be a part of creating a board that truly serves its citizens through proper policy, fiscal transparency and responsibility and by hearing the wishes of our constituents, keeping citizens of Lexington One informed of the board, the work of our board and making sure the needs of our students and staff are being met.
Thank you, Mr. Gailing.
Thank you. And thank you for having us here tonight. I want to say, you know, I've been here a long time, resident of Lexington, I'm sure there's other people who've been longer, you know, but I wanna say I really like this community. I feel like I need to give back to them for all they've done for us, for my family and all the rest. And in some, I think the focus here we need to get down to, we need to talk about our kids. We need, need to get them back to the basics, you know, reading, writing, math, things of this nature, which I think is, we talked about it earlier, about slipping. We need to get back to these basic common sense, you know, basic reading things and things like this. Uh, we need more financial oversight and transparency regarding all our policies. Our kids deserve better and so do the parents. We all need, you know, just people that are on the board that are willing to stand up and make this, these things happen. One person's not going to, but a group could. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
Again, thank y'all for having us and thank you to all those that have come out to listen to us tonight, either here personally or, or watching live stream or we'll watch the video later. But I wanna get down on a personal level with everyone. Um, I had a long, drawn-out closing statement, but not for stuff I've heard, I just wanna talk to you personally, one-on-one to each one of you. To the students, I want you to know that I'm watching, that you have my full support. That's why we're up here, we wanna make sure the students reach their full potential. To the parents that care about what their students do and everyone else, I support you. I'll have your back when you have something that you wanna get done or have a question. To the teachers and staff, I support you. Teachers should be and staff should have every resource they need to make sure that they're helping us reach every child's potential. To the taxpayer, I'll be a good steward of your money. Um, we know it's your money that put us, that puts us in the, the teachers in the seats and the schools learning. Also, to everyone, we have to work together to make sure that we reach every child's full potential. If you want the status quo, keep on with the status quo. To me, like I said earlier, I believe in moving forward and always striving for the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grenade.
All right, as part of my closing statement, I'm gonna revisit the last question again and say something that Ms. Holmesley, Holmesley brought to my attention and she was absolutely correct. Prior to the MTSS issued in twenty nineteen establishing, uh, social emotional learning across the general population, it was only attached in, uh, DOE regulations to, uh, social emotional disabilities and yet now it is a general population curriculum and that's why I'm against that. Um, I am for parents, if I haven't made that clear, I am for students, I am for freedom and I am for the future. I want to see better accountability, I wanna see better ethics and transparency, I want to weed out conflicts of interest and I, I really just want to see the woke indoctrination, the sexualization of our children, the garbage has to be gone.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Well, like Mr. Pizzuti, I'd like to thank everybody for being here and I'd like to thank y'all for moderating and timekeeping for us. Uh, all of you who are voters, you have a decision to make and I wanna talk to you a little bit about what you need in the school board member. You obviously need somebody who puts children's, children first. You obviously need somebody who communicates openly with stakeholders. You need somebody that builds bridges between others. You need somebody who's an independent thinker and not a rubber stamper. You need somebody who understands the business community of Lexington and how important fiscal responsibility is. You need somebody who has proven strong leadership. You need somebody who's positive and you need somebody who acknowledges that there's always room for improvement. Chris Rice checks all those boxes and I'm gonna ask you on November eighth, or if you're voting early, starting October twenty-fourth, to go in and check the box for Chris Rice for Lexington One School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one candidate that cannot be here this evening, Katie McCown sent us a statement, uh, to read as a closing, so I'm going to read it on a one-minute clock and get as much of it in as I can. Go ahead. "Good evening to my Lexington community members and fellow candidates. I apologize for my absence from tonight's event. I have recently come down with a virus and I thought it would be best for myself and the community if I did not put anyone at risk. I have looked forward to this event and being there with you all, but must focus on getting well. I am a mother of three children, all of whom attend elementary, middle and high school in our district. I am extremely proud of that as I am also a product of Lex One, graduating from LHS in two thousand and three. I'm passionate about being a parent involved in our district, which brings me to why I'm running for school board. I believe parents are the primary stakeholders in our children's education. We need to have parents more involved and heard by the board. We need more communication between board and parent, board and teacher and other councils in Lexington County as we need to strengthen those relationships. Secondly, we need to get back to educating our children. That needs to be a priority as the last few years have set our students back over poorly made decisions during COVID. Our students deserve better. SEL, CRT, EL, among other issues such as gender ideology, have no place..." There we go. With that, I'd like to thank all the candidates who participated and everyone who watched tonight's forum, both here in the auditorium and online. Have a good night.